May 19th Business Meeting for the Patrick Metford Board of Education. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lea, would you please go over the ground rules and the welcome?
Sure. Good evening and welcome to the May 19th, 2025, meeting of the Patrick Metford Board of Education. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please use the exits located at the front and rear of the auditorium to exit the building. Please be advised that smoking and the use of vape products are strictly prohibited on school grounds. There are two public comment portions to the Board of Education meeting. The first will be for comments relating to the consent agenda items and/or presentations. The second public comment section will be open for any topic you would like to bring to the board. During each of these public comment times, each speaker will have three minutes with no sharing of minutes. Please state your name and address when you approach the podium. You will be warned when you have 30 seconds remaining and asked to conclude after three minutes. Please refrain from discussing specific students or staff members. To protect their privacy, these matters should be discussed with the appropriate administrator. Please direct all questions or comments to the Board of Education president.
Thank you, Mr. Lea.
Okay, before we move on, I'd like to take this opportunity in presentations and our reports to say that I'm honored and privileged to, on behalf of the Board of Education, for the New York State School Boards Association's presentation to our trustee Francis Salazar for the Board Achievement Award for his excellence and the recognition for all of the continuing education he does to be the best board member he can. Okay, congratulations against, again, trustee Salazar. Okay, next up, we have a presentation by our ACES students.
May I?
Absolutely, Dr. Jones.
Just, just as Dr. Razilowicz comes forward, I, it is so delightful to see so many of the students who we know so well. I see our opera singer here, Manny, the famous Manny. Hi Manny. He sings opera at so many of our basketball games and he, the just, the, the, the ACES students just are, bring sunshine to any day of the week and it is just an honor and privilege for them to be here. I know that there was a game tonight, so some couldn't make it. I'm just so thankful that any of you could make it. Even if you couldn't, I would have understood, but to see you here and to bring this whole presentation to light is just a delight to be here, so thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Razilowicz and, and the other administrators. Mr. McLeod is here somewhere as well?
Yes, thank you.
Your profile, I couldn't see him. Sorry, Dr. R. Thank you. Now I see him. There you are, Mr. Cracco. All right, please proceed, Dr. R.
Okay, so, um, yes, you know, we're calling it reimagining homecoming because as we know, nobody does homecoming like we do. So I'm not gonna say reinventing homecoming, we're gonna reimagine it. And I think the beauty about education and life, sometimes you find these incredible things that happen that you never thought would, would occur, but lo and behold, it, it changes everything. And I think you're gonna kinda see what I mean by that at the end of this presentation. So certainly before I get started, Mr. McLeod, Mr. Cracco, Mr. Noonan, Mr. Greco, our advisors, Mr. Comanzo, Assistant Principal of the High School, there's been a lot of work that's been going on behind the scenes, certainly with Dr. Jones's support as well throughout the entire process. So, let me, let's see.
Can we advance the slide, please?
There we go. So, introduction and need. In our post-COVID world, there's been a lag in many aspects of society. COVID, again, being the, the culprit of this. And what people may not realize is that homecoming, there's been a lot going on behind the scenes that the community would never know. There's been issues with regard to securing float sites. It's been a challenge. We had one last year where we didn't have a tow truck driver that morning of, and we finally got somebody, which obviously you have to pull four floats and not three, right? There's advisor interest in recruiting the next wave of advisors for each incoming ninth grade, securing of those float sites. So, I think the beauty of it is that on the forefront, the community didn't know that was going on, but certainly Dr. Jones and myself, many conversations about, you know, sustainability and moving forward. So before I go on, I just wanna acknowledge, you know, the, the Patrick Metford, all the Patrick Firehouse, the, the waste management, the various companies that have, have helped us, but it's becoming more challenging and it's not sustainable. We gotta kinda figure out, what do we do moving forward? Many changes happen at our high school and the last thing I certainly want as principal is, we get to a point where, you know, something negative happens. So it's time to start strategically thinking, looking forward, being forward-thinking of, you know, how do we keep that mantra? You know, we've set the bar high of no one doing homecoming like Patrick Metford and to do anything less would be a disservice to what everybody knows in our community. So we have to keep that bar high, so we have to reimagine ourself. Can you forward the slide, please? So, you know, homecoming, people think that it just happens, it's one day and it's there. But the reality is that homecoming is not one day. Homecoming, it, it happens over several months. You know, we have to pick the theme, which comes out in the spring. We gotta figure out what the shirts are that represent the theme by the classes. There's bulletin boards, we have our rateable, which is our battle of the classes. We have our float design, the creation of skits. Again, as I said earlier, we have to secure the float sites, which is nuts. Securing of tow truck drivers, the coordination of the float sites, the supervision. Students, people don't realize that there are seniors driving to these float sites and all the years that we've had that, we haven't had anything, thank God, of somebody being hurt with regard to that. There's the selection of the homecoming court, coordination with the village for the parade, then there is homecoming day. And if, and if you've been to homecoming, you always see me, I'm just like the Tasmanian devil, running around right before that parade, making sure all those pieces are in play because somehow over the years, I guess that's been my role to make sure that it all goes off without a hitch. So it takes all of that over months to finally decide. Now people show up for homecoming and you think that's, hey, they just, there's a lot that goes behind it and, again, we have a standard and we, we don't wanna lessen it, we wanna keep raising the bar for ourselves, for our students, for our community. Can you advance the slide, please? So, problems with sustainability. Fundraising of several thousands of dollars by each class to purchase product, most notably lumber. As you know, coming out of COVID, lumber was probably the same cost as gold. And then as we know, those floats get thrown out after homecoming, which is, is a crime in many ways. It's the securing of the float sites, as I said earlier, the tow truck drivers, chaperones, advisor interest, and the stress. It, it is, it is a big job to, to do. Supervision at float sites, it's something that over the last several years, we've been adding more chaperones there because it's, you know, it, it can be challenging when you have, you know, more than a handful of kids and being responsible for all of them. So again, the job has become overwhelming, so as principal, I have to say, okay, how do we keep what we have or raise the level? At the same time, we need advisor interest, we need faculty interest, we need community support and security sites. And listen, I could tell you as principal, and you've probably seen it as well, prior to COVID, and I don't wanna blame COVID for anything, but it, it has really such a huge impact with the amount of things that are not being done in schools anymore because as a result of COVID, certain companies stop doing things and there's nobody to pick, you know, the baton up and, and, and we, we lose out. So, again, how do we keep this moving forward? So, not sustainable, we need to reimagine homecoming. So we have to resolve, the, the one thing is, the float site locations and transportation of the floats to the, the parade route. We need to build floats that are sustainable due to cost. We wanna, we have to repurpose the, the wood that we're using for our floats, certainly after homecoming. We need to develop a plan for supervision in addition to trying to create more school pride and assistance amongst our student body and staff in a new way. One of the challenges that we've seen over the past several years, we have 600 students in a class. If you've ever come to our rateable, which is our battle of the classes, we probably have about half of each grade level, 300 kids probably for each grade level come to rateable to compete, but yet at the float sites, the numbers have continually dwindled, which means more student, less students have to do more of the work and it can be very challenging. So again, in the midst of all this, if we're gonna reimagine homecoming, how can we also boost school pride? Getting more students to participate in, in our programs, getting more of our teachers involved with it. So we really had to think outside the box and saying, okay, we have all these variables, how can we tie these in a, a knot, if you will, and say, we, we can meet all of the things that we wanna do? So here's our solution. So our students that are here, can you come up here? Because this is the part where I want you up here. And remember, this is a representative, yes.
These are the best, best, best students. They are the best. Come forward, all of you.
Lili's here, so we know we're in good shape.
I know.
Come on over here.
And Jalissa.
We can have some on this side, we'll have some on this side. Where, where are you going? No, no, you're, you're part of, you're part of the plan.
You tell her, Jalissa.
You can take a couple of pictures, too. That would be good. Okay, so, we talk about finding something that came out of nowhere and is going to have a lasting impact on the Patrick Metford School District for many years to come. And lo and behold, what started out as rateable being for the last several years and like in-school DoorDash, as we call it, maybe they'll send us a cease and desist letter, but that, okay, we'll have our lawyers take care of that from DoorDash. But with that being said, they've been generating funds for a larger project that even they or I did not know was coming. And we found a solution to all the stuff, whether it's school pride, getting more voices, student voices involved, doing something incredible for the community, incredible for ourselves, not only as parents, but certainly as educators and as principal. Hit the slide. So, with their funds of, I think, close to $40,000, we have purchased four trailers, four tents, and we will be building our floats on our school property.
So just to step back a minute, $40,000 came over a few years of, what are some of the things you guys make in the kitchen?
Cookies, coffees, and dog biscuits.
And dog biscuits, what flavors?
Pumpkin and peanut butter.
Pumpkin and peanut butter. And they sell out, the cookies sell out every day, right?
Oh, um, fruit cups.
There you go.
Fruit cups. So you can go into the kitchen, be greeted with a smile, get impeccable service, delicious cookies, desire. Don't act like you're embarrassed, Lili, you know it's true. And all of this service with a smile, each and every day, they sell out of their cookies and $40,000 later, we have a solution to our problem, thanks to these amazing students.
Yes, and, and incredible, yes. Give them a round of applause. And an, and an incredible solution at that. So what is that gonna equate to? So, our high school property, we will have four tents with floats being built on our property, spread out. So it takes care of the supervision, it takes care of the students that drive. It, it, it allows us to now, we're not gonna be building floats in the evening time, like the float sites would start anywhere from four or five working to the evening. Now we're gonna have the opportunity, when school's over, to have students come out and build our floats right on our property. We have late buses, so I think I saw Mr. Toops, we won't need any additional late buses, but we'll have two late buses of students to be able to help out. Some of our faculty is here, will be there to be able to help out. And we're looking to spread out the build seizing. Obviously, it's, it's challenging enough, but we wanna create more school pride. There's been some talk of, of a pep rally. Again, a lot of different things that we're throwing around, but again, these four tents will be on our property, they'll be built there, and we're gonna be doing a lot of building inside of the school as well. So it's not solely for that. So we are going to be, so, but here's the other thing, part of it too, and I'm probably getting ahead of myself, but it kinda lends itself in there. In addition to this program, our CTE program is right now, they've built the, the fabricated model for what, we got the first trailer in now, they're building that now, and we'll have the tent set up in two weeks to kinda see with the advisors, what they're gonna need with regard to the building. So now, our CTE program, construction program, is building the base of the float, the core of it, so that the advisors and students can then build on top of it. They will also be taking that apart now, so we're not, we're gonna repurpose the wood. And then after this year, we anticipate of even, going even further, looking at more lightweight products that are just as strong and more durable that we could reuse every year. So they're our trailers, they're our tents, we no longer have to secure float sites throughout the community. And because of that, and I know I'm getting ahead of myself, but it's okay, these will be, along with the other students in the program, will be our grand marshals for homecoming 2025.
The grand marshals, because they saved the day. And, and we broke the news to them. The picture you saw a few slides back was when we shared this with them. And, you know, this is truly a case study, right? That if you were in a master's program, how do you resolve a problem? And what we did, or what the students did, they raised the money. And then we, we talked about it and the CTE program purchased the wood and then they could construct in their classrooms so that we don't have to rely on outside agencies, the tents, the wood, the lumber, the locations, the funding, is all resolved by our students, which in and of itself builds pride. And celebrating the students who are responsible for raising the money. And just so you know, they are so amazing. They had a basketball game tonight, which I hear was a tie. A tie? I'm used to you guys winning, but a tie, I'll take a tie, too. But they still came here tonight and I told them, you don't have to come because I know you're just getting off of a game and they're still here. That's how dedicated they are. And I couldn't be more proud of them, all of them, for all that they do. And, you know, some games Manny sings the national anthem. I know one time I posted it on social media and I don't know how many thousands of views it got, but people don't even believe that's Manny. I said, that can't be Manny's voice, but it really, you are amazing, opera singer, Manny? How did you get that voice? Amazing. They are so gifted and talented. We're so proud of them and we're so proud that they will be the grand marshals because they saved the day.
Yes. And certainly, just to add to that, we're also going to invite the personnel out in our community that have assisted in past years with their sites. We don't wanna think that because we've reimagined ourselves that, you know, they, they no longer are, are relevant. They certainly are and we wanna bring them in and we'll, we'll have more to say with regard to that going forward. Before we go to the next slide, I just wanna say thanks to Mr. McLeod again with the CTE program. He was the point person with regard to that. Certainly, Mr. Noonan and his team going forward. So, again, it's just, it's really a, a team effort. Okay, you can advance to the next slide. So some of the stuff I've already said already, so again, homecoming, self-sustainable, repurposing of wooden materials, CTE classes, more effective supervision, float sites at our, our high school. Custodial maintenance staff will pull the floats in the parade. Float building after school, less pressure on advisors, we're gonna expand the window of building the floats, so it'll be less hours over a longer period of time, right after school. Again, we have late buses, I think more increased opportunity for staff. And again, like I said earlier, new times require new methods and opportunities to move forward. Next slide, please. So conclusion and thoughts, as we said, our students will be the grand marshals for homecoming 2025. After this year's bill, we'll look to further transition to more modular floats. They are modular now, but we're gonna look to increase that, increase our school pride and community and maybe, just maybe somewhere along the line, a middle school float. Not gonna be, not gonna be judged, but certainly there's opportunity to increase that pride because again, we wanna get some of our middle school students to get excited for the high school. So we believe we could still live up to nobody doing homecoming like Patrick Metford can. Next slide. Thank you. Thank you. Stay positive. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll get you two, both at the same time. Oh, you gotta salute, you gotta salute, you salute, right? You salute me today.
I just wanna also thank Mr. Cracco, Mr. McLeod, Mr. Noonan, Mr. Mazy, along with Dr. Razilowicz, they worked tirelessly on this project to reimagine it. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Just thank you. Amazing.
I'd just like to say one last thing. You know, behind the scenes in all this, I cannot thank Dr. Jones enough because in the times I would go to Dr. Jones, say, this is where we're at, this is what we need, this is what we expect, and, and she was always there, no questions asked, and I certainly wanna thank her publicly for all the stuff that we've been able to do privately. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, Dr. R. Any questions for Dr. R. before?
I'd just like to thank you for the, the creative solutions to all of the, just create a whole new wonderful thing. It's great. Thank you very much.
Everybody good? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. R. Next, I'd like to welcome up to the podium our Director of Transportation, Mr. John Toops, to introduce Mr. Adam Kaufman and Wendell Energy Services for a presentation on battery transition plan.
So I just wanna take the opportunity to introduce Adam Kaufman. He is from Wendell. We are going through a bus electrification plan. They're coming here on site, they'll be doing some planning and just, yeah. So, without further ado, let me introduce Adam Kaufman.
So I have to follow up that act. This is gonna be tough here now, okay? So yes, my name's Adam Kaufman and I am an engineer with Wendell Companies. We're an architecture and engineering firm. And we've been doing work throughout the island around the transition from a internal combustion engine, a diesel bus fleet, to an electric bus fleet. And it revolves around the state mandate that's out there right now, which is basically, you know, having school districts in New York State transition from their existing bus fleet to electric bus fleet by 2035. So that's what this, I put a little presentation together, it will overview what we do. You know, we've worked with roughly over a dozen other school districts on Long Island and probably 50 to 60 school districts throughout New York State. So we've been doing this for a while now and I'll give you a, a rough overview of what that is. I guess I'll do this, I think, because I don't think this is working right now. It does? Okay, nice. Okay, so agenda, I'll go through it, I'll spend as much time on each of these sections as we need. You know, I usually like to keep it free, I guess we can save questions to the end if we need to. If people felt they wanted to interject during it, I have no problem with that. So, start about who Wendell is. We'll go into what the goals of a zero emission transition plan is, what the typical scope of work is, how the utility comes into the picture, NYSERTA, the program they have around this and the funding that's available to do this planning, and then questions and discussion. So Wendell, like I said, we are a full-service architecture and engineering firm. We also have core businesses in construction management and energy efficiency. We are focused in New York State, we're headquarters in Williamsville, Buffalo. If you visit, you should go get some wings because they're the best in the world there. So we have offices all throughout New York State, I think 13 to be exact in the state, and the local office is in Hopkog. We do work nationally, shaded regions are where we're actively doing work. How we see ourselves. So we see ourselves as a trusted advisor. We don't represent any product, we don't represent any chargers, we don't sell any buses type of thing. So we're really vendor agnostic, we're technical experts and we try to propose the best solutions for each of the people we work with. A little bit about our experience, again, we are full-service architecture engineering and we cut our teeth on electric vehicles and the zero emission vehicle space in transit. So transit is a little bit ahead of school districts. They have been working on this mandate to a cleaner fleet and transportation for a long time. It started with hybrid and they've transitioned to electric vehicles and there is some hydrogen products out there in the transit space. We've done a lot of work in Connecticut and New York State. The bottom right is some of the transition plans to highlight some of the school districts we've done locally, but we've done many more as well. I had to fit it on one page. So, the zero emission bus mandate. As it stands, there's two key dates to be aware of. It's kind of fluid, it's changing, there was recent releases on this. But right now, the dates are 2027. That date represents when all new school buses you purchase are to be electric vehicles. So no more internal combustion engine vehicles or diesel vehicles, they want it to be electric by that point. So that would mean, hey, if you're gonna start to purchase vehicles, you gotta have the infrastructure to charge them for that to make sense. The other key date is the 2035 date, which is when all school buses on the road, it's actually pupil transportation, so it's bigger than school buses, some of the small vans are included in there, too, would need to be 100% zero emissions. They say, they define it as zero emissions, that, that opens the door for hydrogen products and battery electric products. Right now, the market, there's no commercially available hydrogen products, so it leaves you with one option. The last bullet here is about New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, NYSERTA. So they're tasked by the state to provide the technical assistance. They're the ones that are leading this initiative throughout the state. They subsidize the study. We work very, very closely with them in their technical approach and reviews and, you know, available funding. So a little bit about what we do. This is a standard scope, we define it in seven tasks. I will say, this study has been used by other districts to evaluate other aspects such as solar, such as site selection, such as, you know, other aspects that may be adjacently related to your fleet or transportation that they, we were able to get included into the study. So just adding that here, but I'll touch on the, the standard approach here. And it's really, we'll have a kickoff meeting, there's, there's a whole pre-process of getting approved with NYSERTA, but once we are approved, we have a kickoff meeting, we'll introduce the team, the timeline, and we'll go over the scope a little bit more detail. Task two is a data collection. So this is the biggest lift in the district. John, this is my biggest lift on you here. So I'm gonna need to get all the information about your routes, your buses, your site, your electrical capacity, things like that. I know all the PSEG people, so we won't need to worry about that contact information. But task two is really, hey, I need to learn as much as I can about who Patrick Metford is. Route analysis, so we look at each of the routes, how long are they, what's their duration, what's their distance? Can an electric bus product drive that route? And how much would it need to recharge for the next route that it was going to do? Task four, like each of these tasks kinda build on each other. So task four is about a charging strategy. So it looks at not just one route or one bus, but it looks at your whole, all of the buses together at that site. buses together at that site and says, okay, how much power would I need to bring to this site to be able to charge all the buses as per the routes that are provided? Each bus needs a certain amount. And so then we know how much power is required at the site, and we start working with PSEG, local utility. We say, hey, PSEG, do you guys have this amount of power, and how much would it cost for you to bring that power here? After that, we put together a concept plan. It's kind of like a 30% schematic design. It lays out where your buses and chargers would be laid out on site, what that cost would be, and, you know, obviously, we'll work closely with you guys to make sure it aligns with kind of your vision of that space. But it gives you guys a lot of information to really make planned decisions and understand what does this transition plan mean for Patchogue Medford. And the last test there is a cost estimate. It is a detailed cost estimate, line by line. It's broken out into phases typically, so you might not need to do everything at once. You might be able to get a couple buses, then a couple buses, and so on. All of that gets summarized into a lengthy report. It's usually a couple hundred pages, 50 pages of core content, and it summarizes all of, you know, the work that we did in the analysis. It summarizes our approach from a concept perspective, the costs, and it summarizes all of the incentive money that's currently out there around this space. It's very comprehensive. On the screen, I flashed a couple. These are some of the most common commercially available battery electric bus products on the market today. You may know their diesel counterparts. Highlight it just to show that there are certain operating ranges they list here. When we do our modeling, we're looking at worst-case conditions. That's cold weather. That's when they're not going to drive that far. So what we'll say they'll drive is probably half that, if that. So again, just the emphasis that the models are, hey, this is not what they put on a piece of marketing material. This is what we see from real-life, you know, on-road driving data. Okay, so here's an interesting part. Like I said, New York, NYSERTA, New York State Research and Development Authority, has incentive money around this space. For this program, they have great incentive money. They have two programs that you can get funded under. They've actually been merged, so they're all flexible technical assistance program now, but the brackets still stand the same. You are either at 75% funded for this plan, or you are at 100% funded for this plan. Patchogue Medford happens to be 100% funded for this plan, so it is at no cost to the district to do this study. What's great about working with Wendell is Wendell's an approved partner. It's not a reimbursement to you guys. You never have to see the money come out of your paycheck or your pockets. It goes right direct payment to Wendell. A little bit more about it, funding programs. Oh, that didn't come over, right? Nice. So we'll stick here. The main funding program here is a New York School Bus Incentive Program. It's broken out into two brackets. It is the School Bus Incentive Program, and it is the Charger Incentive Program. So basically, they're giving you money for each of the chargers you buy and for each of the school buses you buy. The goal is to, you know, subsidize the capital impact on the district and get it cost competitive, comparable, or even, you know, more cost advantageous to the district versus their diesel counterparts. That's their goal. There's also other tax credits. There's federal money out there. We typically don't present that because we're less confident in its longevity, but these state programs, we're very confident, and NYSERTA has large commitments to. Again, those didn't come over great. I apologize. So the last things I'll talk about is kind of what one of the schematic designs can look like. This is for a school district upstate by our headquarters. We've actually built the first phase of this plan, which is great, but essentially, it breaks out their school district. I think they had something like 70 buses, and we basically outlined how we could approach their existing site and where we would bring chargers and power in a phased approach. So the first phase is on the left. We bring it up on the right side of their transportation site. Then we bring that lower bottom section in. I think the next ones have the next ones as well. Exactly. And then we bring that top left corner of the site in. So essentially, it just outlines that everything doesn't have to be done at once. We'll break it down into pieces, and we'll present it in that way, and we'll work closely with you guys to say, does this fit what you guys, you know, envision? And that's all I have for you. So any questions, thoughts?
So very many. Not to you. Like, we don't own most of our buses. We contract out. I welcome your thoughts on that.
Yeah. So I think having a, you know, small fleet is fine, and we do studies that are 10-bus studies, which is no problem, five-bus studies, right, to understand, still, you got to understand your site and what it would take. There's also school districts that choose this as an opportunity to study what that impact would be to spring some of those contracted routes in-house, right? So you said, hey, if I wanted to study the contracted routes as well, figure out what that capacity, that power impact would be on our site, if our site is even feasible for it, things like that. People take this as an opportunity to evaluate that. But it's really, you know, based on what you guys want and envision for your school district. It's very okay and acceptable. You wouldn't be the only district. Many districts do it that don't have a large fleet, that just want to study their buses.
Is it, what I'm thinking of, the high school specifically, because they have a very large use of buses, and it's over the course of a day that would be needed to be charged, but it's the other company's buses, so would we have charging stations on our property for the vendor to be charging at?
Yeah, that relationship there gets very interesting. So if that's your envision for it, NYSERTA...
I don't have any vision whatsoever. I'm just questions.
Sure, sure. You know, in that scenario, I think it's more common to see, you know, the school district refer us to the vendor and say, hey, because the vendor really has an interesting study. That bus is not just used for Patchogue Medford. That bus is used all over the place. So, you know, it almost becomes a, your contractor-specific study about how they operate their fleet. It would really be more for if you guys envisioned bringing those buses in-house.
Okay, I have a question about the timeframe here.
Sure.
So that was 120 minutes on a best-case scenario was the charge?
120 miles.
120 miles.
60 miles, you said.
So 60 miles.
You said a half on 20. Right. We would be more conservative. Again, different bus products have different ranges. Those are four common products there, so different, you know, different buses can go different ranges, essentially. Some buses can go up to 250 miles. So at half that might be...
Because, you know, some of our buses, we loop and loop and loop, and by the time that loops over, then we're bringing them home, and we're looping again. So I was just curious, how did that? And then infrastructure. Yeah, do we know if the town of Brookhaven has the street capacity or the street's strong enough to handle the weight of the buses? Oh, I was thinking the charging station in itself.
The streets are not...
The capacity for, the charging capacity.
That's a more, that's a typically, you know, more, you know, question that does need to be solved, and I actually don't know the answer to that, but I can promise you that as part of this study, we will.
Because even just with the solar panels, we've hit snags where we can't, we can't utilize our plans, so we're moving forward and coming up with options because our buildings can't even sustain the weight of the solar panels.
I think the beauty of what we're seeing here is the first steps to begin to explore the study, to identify what the capacities can and cannot be, what we can and cannot do, what does this even look like, what are our options, who we have to get involved, what various costs are going to need to be had in order to make this work, and how does the operation function, and how does this affect the daily operation, even down to the routing for everything that needs to occur? So I think before we can even answer the questions that are very good questions that you've laid out, we first have to explore and go with the study to identify and learn more about what is involved with this, what are the timelines associated with this, what structural issues will be available, you know, what kind of retrofitting needs to occur, and what kind of kinks are we gonna run into, are you gonna run into along the way? And so I think the first step is to have the study, and so before we actually recommended for approval, the study, which is of no cost to us, the first step was to have the presentation. And in Mr. Maisy's absence, we still wanted to go forward with the presentation so that we can consider the contract, which is currently under review with our attorneys and their attorneys, to proceed just like we do with energy performance contracts and everything else.
So could you clarify for me the scope of the study?
Um, yeah.
I mean, roughly. I mean, you had a slide on it, but I didn't take a picture.
Sure, yeah. Generally, the scope of the study looks at your fleet. It looks at your specific buses, and if they're viable with an electric bus counterpart. It looks at the power capacity of the site and the requirements of that fleet, and it looks at the cost to install that electrical infrastructure and charging infrastructure at that site. And I'll add one extra, which it incorporates the incentive monies that are available to help you guys make that transition.
Okay, so it's very site-specific to our properties.
It is at your site, at your property, correct?
Do we know who's doing the studies on larger infrastructure, larger government and provided infrastructure, like streets, energy capacity, that kind of? Do we know who's doing that?
So there are agencies for it. I'm probably not the best person to answer that question, but I will tell you this, that in terms of the roads, there is requirements and standards of vehicles that drive on that road, and those bus manufacturers have to meet those requirements to drive on these roads. So in terms of road safety, those manufacturers are really the ones that are focused on that.
Okay.
And have you done studies for school districts of comparable size?
Yeah, definitely. And, you know, this is, so yes, and from a bus fleet perspective, much, much larger, right? Some of the districts we've done is 200 buses, and that's a whole different nightmare going on there, or, you know, approach.
Any questions, trustees?
Thank you very much. Take care. Have a great night.
So for the next meeting, we hopefully will have everything fully vetted. There's no cost to the district to explore the study and to acquire additional information so that next steps can ensue from there.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. This would normally be the time when Ella McCann, our ex officio student, would make a presentation, but she's not here with us this evening, so we're going to move on to number eight, which would be public comments on reports and the agenda items. We're going to limit it to three minutes per person, to a total of no more than 60 minutes and no sharing of minutes by residence, and it'll be based on the information that has been presented to this point. When you come up to the podium, if you'd like to speak or ask a question, please state your name and your address. Okay, so now we're going to move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda, and I would like to ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda. I need a motion. Trustee Jennings and a second. Trustee Salazar, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Passes. Five, no, five zero. Five zero. You got it, right? Okay. Thank you. All righty. So now, we're going to move on to here. Okay, item number 10, there were no items removed from the consent agenda for a separate vote. Number 11, there were no actions arising out of executive session. Number 12, informational items. Okay, first reading policies. The following policies will be circulated for first reading. If there are no changes, the policy will be included on the June 23 agenda, and they are 5129.1, artificial intelligence, 5132, grading systems, 6154, the homework policy. Okay, I'm going to, now, number 13, Dr. Jones, for the superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening again, everyone. I'd like to first start by thanking the trustees for approving the full agenda. Included on the agenda were the bid awards for a number of the capital projects associated with the athletic field and gym improvements associated with the bond issue. So a lot of that work will start this summer, so we're super excited that the state has improved the aid on those projects so that we could proceed. A lot of work will be going on, and in Mr. Maisy's absence, I just wanted to acknowledge that that was one of the items that was approved on the agenda. So thank you for that. The next thing I'd like to say is, last week was a super busy week in Patchogue Medford. It started and ended with a bang. I will say that it started last Monday night with our PMCT Awards Night. I'd like to publicly thank and acknowledge all of our teachers and teaching assistants that are part of that unit under the leadership of Kevin Tulen and his executive board. It was an amazing evening, continues to always improve and be greater than we could ever expect each year. So that started last Monday night, and it was this actual room, and it was standing room only. It was a wonderful evening to celebrate our students. And then we moved on through the week with a multitude of concerts all throughout the week. Wednesday evening was volunteer recognition night. It was an amazing evening where we had the opportunity to showcase the talent of some of our students in the music and arts area. They, I know it's been, it's amazing when they have me reminiscing down West Side Story and knowing all the songs. It was really, really wonderful. It was, there were well over 300 volunteers that were administrators, teachers, aides, teaching assistants, all gamuts, Board of Education. All of us were there to celebrate and share the appreciation. We were able to also acknowledge our Volunteer of the Year, Ms. Leela Singh from the Ketchmon area of Eagle Elementary, who is also a volunteer, but also works in one of our schools as well. She was recognized, and then we also, and as part of our desire to improve community engagement over the course of the year, we, for the first time, had a competition for community engagement for each of our schools to participate in, and there was a rating scale for them, for us to rate the level of engagement, and we were very proud to acknowledge Canaan Elementary School as the winner of the most engaged school by the rubric that we had identified. They will be hosted with a barbecue that will be from district office, superintendent office, and we will be at Canaan on the date in June to be selected to acknowledge Canaan, the Canaan community, for all of their efforts. So congratulations to Leela Singh, Volunteer of the Year, and to Canaan Elementary School under the leadership of Ray Ruiz for outstanding community engagement. I would also like to thank the community partners. There were so many community partners the night of volunteer recognition. We will be, if we didn't already, highlight them on our social media page for the district. They provided all of the food for the event, and so our community got the opportunity to have entertainment by our students. They were fed by our community partners, so truly exemplifying community engagement at its best all around. Also, the ROTC brought the color guard, just an amazing all-around with our glee club and their spectacular performance as well. And we rounded out the week on Sunday with Hispanic Heritage... And we rounded out the week on Sunday with Hispanic Heritage Parade down Main Street that I had the good fortune of attending. It was going on for hours. The parade was incredible, and it, and I don't know what time it stopped, but I know I was there a long time, and it was, there was no end in sight. What a wonderful way to celebrate on a beautiful day Hispanic heritage here in Patchogue. It was just a wonderful, wonderful day. One of the students, there was a student that was an honoree in the parade. He is one of our top 10 students, Kevin Hidalgo, who will be going to Yale in the fall, and he is of Hispanic descent, descent, and he was an honoree in the parade. It was wonderful to see him, to hear him speak about his heritage, and to celebrate his ancestry, because he, as he put it, "He stood on their shoulders to get where he was." And so that was wonderful. I'd also like to acknowledge that the top 10 students have been announced. We will certainly highlight them on social media, but I will acknowledge the top three. The valedictorian is Val Garab, I mean, I'm sorry, valedictorian is Garab Dishwashed with a GPA of 105.25. Isaac Vergis, salutatorian with a GPA of 103.87, and our SEs, Aaron Diamond with a GPA of 103.47. Congratulations to our top three, our top 10, and to all the graduates that will be coming forward next month. I would also like to say, in that very busy week, we had a visit from the State Education Department. They wanted to see the work that we've been doing around cultural competence, and the director, the executive director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity for the State Education Department came to tour several of our buildings, three. She toured our, one of our elementary schools, a middle school, and a high, the high school, and she was absolutely blown away at the work that we do. It's not a check-the-box work, it is who we are. It's ingrained in the fiber and DNA of how we function, and no one person owns that ability to move the district forward in that way. We have created a culture of care that is notable by the State Education Department and other districts as well. So we were very proud to tour her around and for her to see the incredible work of our district. I'm also excited to share that our girls' flag football team completed an outstanding regular season. They finished as an undefeated team and are earning the title of conference one champions. Wow, they're, they're only a couple of years old as a team, and they are the conference champions. They now entered the playoffs as the favorites to win the Suffolk County Championship. Congratulations to head coach Brad Wyman, who was named coach of the year for his leadership and success. Both of our base, our baseball and softball teams secured playoff births with key victories over conference rivals during the past two weeks, and we look forward to a strong postseason performance for, from both programs. I could go on and on and on, because there, every day, there is another update to our athletics program and the, the amazing victories. Mr. Crackle, are you there? Did I miss one? Is lacrosse?
Girls lacrosse are playing tomorrow at Seacham at 4:00. Baseball will be home tomorrow at 4:00, as well as girls' flag football will be home tomorrow at 4:00.
Are there any potential other placements?
I think it's those, as for team sports, it's those four, and then we'll have the individuals from the both boys and girls track that will be, be going into the qualifying season and the county championship season.
So kudos to Mr. Crackle under his leadership. We have been able to improve in so many ways our athletic program. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your fine work there as well. I know I thanked all relative to the presentation for this evening, but I also, once again, want to acknowledge Mr. Noonan for all the work he contributed to the homecoming presentation, because there were a lot of bid specifications that were necessary in order to acquire all of the equipment in order to reimagine homecoming. So thank you, as always, Mr. Noonan, for all that you do behind the scenes, and certainly to Mr. McLeod. There was a lot that was necessary in order to embed this work in the curriculum, which he was able to seamlessly do and enable our students to build, construct, deconstruct, save the wood, repurpose the wood, so that there would be ingrained savings for years to come with the manner in which we reimagine. I'll also say the art and music department, there were art shows last week and into this week, so if you haven't had a chance to see the amazing artwork as you came in this building, note that you can walk into any of our 11 buildings and see amazing artwork that is displayed in all of our buildings. So thank you to Mr. Brinkman and all of our art teachers for the tireless efforts with the art, our music teachers with the concerts. And I think that concludes the tremendous week of just last week. I could go on and on if I went back more than one week, but I think I will stop there in the interest of time. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 14, which is committee reports, and we're going to first start with buildings in operations, and that's going to be trustee Krieger.
We had our meeting on May 6th. We went over, we pretty much are going over a lot of the updates for the bond and the Bay addition, because we're rapidly moving ahead with them. As we said, the lighting, the stand, the scoreboards, the sound systems, we have approvals from SCD for them, we're opening the bid, we've opened the bid, so the numbers look promising and under budget, which is always good. The secondary schools and the music and lighting, we should have the high school worked on in October, Saxon in November, Oregon and South Ocean in February. The bids for those are now open, right, Mr. Noonan? The bids are open for those as well? And then the HVAC upgrades, we had a slight hiccup with the roof and the solar for South Ocean, so we just kind of moved ahead to Tremont and Eagle, so we're working on Bay and then Phase Two simultaneously, so that's good. Rather than waste time waiting, we're just moving, plowing ahead with that. And we went over the EPC update, and we're working on revised suggestions on how to handle our solar panels for over at South Ocean, which may include carports rather than roofing options. So that was it, and just a reminder that you can see all of these updates on the website in the little button that says capital improvements.
Thank you, trustee Krieger. Okay, next up, we have finance, but neither Mr. Maisy or Mr. trustee DiNofrio are here today, so Dr. Jones will just make some comments on the finance and moving forward.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I will just say that the only update that I think that's relevant to share is the state finalized their budget, they enacted their budget. For Patrick Medford, that made approximately $1.6 million increase in our overall state aid allocation. That's great news, but don't get too happy yet. And I'll say that we know that with the current climate and the recession, and I don't want to say the R-word, but we know that there's a lot of increases that are unknown in terms of cost of doing business for next year, and so this helps us to better position ourselves to have a little bit of cushion in the event that the cost of doing business increases because of the overseas tariffs and just the high price of getting various resources that we, we know we have to just be prepared for in the event that that does occur. So we have analyzed very carefully the numbers and feel that this is certainly good news. It provides a little bit more of a buffer, but as we know, there are always things that come up unexpected, so it's good that we have a little bit of a buffer built into the budget, but we also know that there are unforeseen costs that are on the horizon, so I think that is the major thing. We know that the vote is tomorrow. I encourage you all to get out from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. to, to get out and vote. I can't tell you how to vote, but certainly encourage you to vote. I thank the PMCT for their efforts of going around all throughout the community. I can't say thank you for telling folks to vote a certain way, but I could say thank you for being advocates and being supportive and taking time out of your busy Saturdays to walk the streets and make sure that folks are aware that there is a budget vote tomorrow. It's important, and what you said from there, I'm not going to know, because I wasn't there. But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, next up, we have district-wide technology. We had our last meeting for the year on May 14th. We discussed a number of topics. First, we talked about the digital AP exams were successfully administered, administered with no issues across the board. The computer-based testing ran smoothly, except there was an initial issue with everybody signing on at the same time throughout the state, and it locked up the system, and what Patrick Medford and another couple of other communities did was waited two days and went on and had no issues being able to get to the test and successfully complete it. The AI policy was shared with Dr. Jones and Mrs. Kennedy, who sent it to our attorneys. The policy was reviewed by the attorneys, who recommended removing one bullet point that was already addressed in the academic integrity policy. The revision has been made and has been updated on the AI policy, which was part of the first reading in tonight's agenda. The, Mr. Richroth discussed the move, students' move as an M-O-O-V, student attendance tracking system. He reported that it worked very well at the Raider Academy and at Saxon. Students were able to enter the classroom, and in the front of the room, there's a reader where they tap their ID badge in each classroom, and that will provide an accurate, real-time assessment of where they are and what their attendance is, and it gives them, gives the school district an ability to understand where the students are at all times. They will continue to deploy these types of scanners at both Oregon and South Ocean as well. If the student forgets their, their, their ID badges, the teachers can still continue to do attendance the way it's always been done. Kindergarten first grade is the one-to-one devices that going to be changes. They're transitioning kindergarten and first-grade students from laptops to iPads to better support their instructional needs. The iPads will remain in the classroom, will only be sent home when necessary, such as in a weather-related event. Each K-1 classroom will be equipped with charging card to securely store and charge the devices. There will be an improvement with student ease to use the iPad over utilizing the computers, user-friendly for K-1 kids. The iPads will also be set up for students prior to them receiving it, looking at the possibility of possibly going to second grade, getting them as well in the 2026, '27 school year with the keyboard attachment. Phasing out smart boards and smart notebook software. Currently, the school district has Promethean boards in 349 classrooms, smart boards in 92 classrooms, and ENO boards in 140. The district will continue with the installation of Promethean boards in the classrooms with the goal of installing 70 to 100 units per year, and this approach will support a seven-year replacement cycle, so the technology will always be at the cutting edge, and the won't, the high cost of upgrades in the future will be minimized. Additionally, we are planning to phase out the smart notebook software due to noticeable decline in usage, and we will also begin retiring the old smart boards and ENO boards. The need of the software significantly has diminished, and the Promethean has its own software to utilize. With that, that completes my report for the Technology Committee from our last meeting on May 14th. Next up would be extracurricular, which would be trustee Jennings.
We didn't meet, but we'll meet again in June and we'll send out a date.
Thank you, trustee. Instructional and student support, that would be trustee Salazar.
All right, our last meeting was May 8th at 4:30 in South Ocean Conference Room. The committee reviewed all changes to the grading policy. They're going to be due up and are going to be in our first reading. That was just announced earlier. These new changes include new ranges for formative and summative assessments, capping at 70%, decreased by 10% from our previous policy. New range for the percentage of department discretion, setting a max and minimum for the combined percentage for summative and formative assessments, and adjusting late assignments, moved from percentage to points, taken off for late assignments. This ensures that deductions are excluded for in-class assessments and homeworks. We also reviewed the homework policy. We reviewed updates to kindergarten, which the committee was in favor of allowing for up to, at max, three homeworks per night for kindergarten with, that does not exceed 10 minutes a night. This allows teachers to send home small little things that reinforce instructions such as sight words without creating any type of penalty for students not doing it. It just allows teachers to send little, little things home with them. Percentage of homework was updated from 10% to up to 20%. This will now be part of the grading policy, so this was reviewed from the homework policy. Also reviewed that homework was not to be graded, since this will also be addressed in the grading policy. It's kind of just like, not a grade number, but a completion that they will, that goes into the homework part of the grading section. So further information on this is in the policy that's going to be up for the first reading, and our next meeting will be Thursday, June 12th at 4:30. We have discussed perhaps doing this in the Zoom meeting, but we will contact our committee to update them with that information. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Salazar. Next up is legislation, and that's trustee Smith.
We didn't meet, we haven't rescheduled our next one yet, but we, I guess we will. We have had some discussions about continuing to meet through the summer, but that's still a discussion happening.
There were some notable achievements going in the state budget that we had been working on as a committee, including universal free meals, the restoration of Foundation A. So there was some notable accomplishments that did happen in the state budget.
Okay, moving on to item number 15, discussion topics. Trustee Jennings would like to talk about policy.
So, we got our, on, on, onboarding this way, and it says about summer approaches, but policies year-round. Seems to me there's another policy that we're supposed to do, which is extreme heat, which is due by September 1st.
Yes.
Extreme heat policy. We have like three policies we have to write, maybe four.
We can get them from NISBA.
One is cell phone, one is ex officio, one is the extreme heat, and then there's other ones in here, so you guys can all read them when you get home. I would recommend that we talk with our attorneys, because typically- I would recommend that we talk with our attorneys because typically if there is one from school boards, there would be some draft that we could look at. Sometimes they have it because they've drafted it, excuse me, for other districts upstate. So if those are what you would like us to look into, we can certainly reach out to them. And if there are some templates available, we can provide those to the board for discussion.
Yeah, New York State School Boards has whole, whole office that does that.
All kinds of templates.
We can, we can start to look at that.
Extreme heat, cell phone, and what was the?
Ex officio.
I think we already have.
There's some others there. 22 or something like that, 29.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Smith. Number 16, community comments. At this time, the floor is open to anyone who would like to address the board on any Please state your name and your home address.
Thank you for allowing me to speak at tonight's meeting. It's my first one that I'm attending. My name's Laura Perrini. My home address is 15 Evan Street, Patchog. I am currently under the residence of Canaan Elementary School. What I saw tonight from the individuals earlier regarding the homecoming was positive. However, I am coming to you tonight as a parent who is concerned and quite frankly disappointed in the school district. My child is a first grader, seven years old, and she was exposed to adult nudity, graphic images, pornographic of matter from the school-issued laptop from a loophole in YouTube through the ClassLink website. My professional occupation allows me to see both the good and evil in this world. I did not think for one second that I would have to have the conversations and answer the questions that I'm answering, asked by my seven-year-old child in regard to what she saw on that laptop. I was advised by the principal and the head of the IT department, Mr. Rickroff, that it was a third-party vendor, and that was a loophole, and it was being taken care of, and that YouTube is restricted access for grades K through five. However, my seven-year-old was shown these images on another student's laptop. I will spare the rest of the audience details, but it was adult nudity. So my question is, what is the policy regarding school incidences? When does it go from a school investigation to a legal investigation? When do we notify police to come investigate? When does CPS referral become a matter of investigation?
Thank you for reporting this. Obviously, it is always our intention to keep all children, students, staff, everyone safe, and we know that the technology's ever-evolving, students' ability to navigate around is ever-evolving. I need to investigate this, and I certainly will follow up with you. Your, your name and everything is for the record, and we will follow up with you at the district level now.
I appreciate that. I did involve local police based on the fact that, again, I am beyond disgusted that my seven-year-old had to see this. So I appreciate the response and thank you for the follow-up.
We will certainly get back to you in short order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any other community comments? Board comments? Trustee Salazar?
First off, I'd like to thank Dr. R. for his presentation on the solution to our homecoming problem with our wonderful ACES students. It's great to see us being resourceful, again, proactive, and allowing these kids to help rescue our homecoming. It's great to see their faces here. Beyond that, I guess I'd like to say hopefully everybody comes out and votes tomorrow, and that's it. Thank you.
Trustee Krieger.
I was making a very extensive list here of all of these wonderful events that we have to all divide and conquer with, but we have a lot of events coming up, scholarship nights, music galas, we have a PTA council, we have graduation, we have moving ups, we still have concerts, we have our glee club musical showcase for those that got to see the preview at Volunteer Night. We have a full show of that, so I'm just looking forward to wrapping up this year on a positive note. I would love a lot of people to spread the word and come out and vote for the budget and for the candidates, because I know when no one is running against somebody, people tend to sit back and relax, but it's really not the case, and you guys should come out. That's that.
Trustee Smith.
I won't say a lot. I did have the privilege of seeing Dr. Jones at the parade on, very, very long parade on Sunday. I loved that event. It would be great to see if we could get, we had a, our Hispanic Heritage Club from the high school was also there. It would be nice if we, see if we could get more participation in that. I'm grateful to Dr. R. and the entire team that create, that fixing this homecoming thing. I look forward to seeing that grow more. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Jennings?
Yeah, I think it was great to have the students come out and come up with a plan for homecoming. It's, it's great to see that and the funds that they raised at their shop. I wasn't at the volunteer recognition night because I was at our community sluits, which recognizes our, some of our seniors in town of Brookhaven, especially some in our district who are enlisting into the military. So I went there to them, and we have a lot of students that are enlisting into the military. And I just have to say, the high school concert, number two, was phenomenal. That was just, I don't know, it just, it was awesome just to see them play, and I really hope that we get an in and that's to New York State School Boards, because they play that piece, I mean, they'll, will be the talk of the century. But do we have an idea of when they're going to come back to us on that one?
I think it usually happens over the summer.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Jennings.
I want to, I want to jump in. I also forgot, I wanted to thank Mr. Toulon and the union for, every year they go out and they hit the streets and they hit the, hit the doors to try to get it, to get people to remember to come out to vote. And we're not going to tell them how to vote, but turnout is, is an important part of, of helping elections work. And you guys are directly responsible for the increase in turnout that we have had over the past several years, and I'm grateful for you.
Yes, to echo that, the Teachers Union does a wonderful job to try to get the word out and get everybody involved. So again, thank you for all your hard efforts. Thank you to everybody that does everything in this district to ensure that our students continue to move forward and we're on the cutting edge, and it's great to see our art and music programs doing so well, the concerts flourishing, our sports and athletic program are doing so well. So thank you to everybody, every teacher, every student, every administrator that works hard, and every parent that encourages them to do so, to continue moving forward for our district. Thank you. With that, number 18, I have a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, so we have Trustee Salazar and Trustee Krieger. Thank you.
Aye. All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Aye, aye, aye.